Karen, on day day, welcome our guest. Hello?
Hello.
Thank you for being here. Are there any agenda revisions?
I think we're going to be hiring one more. Hiring approval for the package. Someone that's already been here for one year.
Okay, so we'll just add that under 5.3.
Yeah, it's just another person. I'll actually start that right now. I have the non-formal. Mark, we'll tell you more about Mark.
And, hey Karen.
Thanks.
And we do have a green team presentation?
Yeah.
I don't see them.
I think they rallied out.
Oh, okay. So they may come late.
They may come late.
They may not come.
They may not come.
All right.
Hey, all right, I just want to say I'm going to apologize. I'm going to put on my dad hat.
Yep.
So I'm going to shortly go watch my daughter at one of her events and then I'll get back in.
Bill's on call. Okay, 1.3 is public comments. Would you like to make any comments?
Sure. So I am here again, once again, on the white table. And at your last meeting, you agreed to consider the issue again, so I hope you are going to be doing that today. And I still feel pretty strongly that having an independent person at the math table, not a mix-up of the different teachers coming in. And I also, I heard some sort of grapevine that some administration were unhappy about the decision of the board. And I guess I just want to say about that, that I hope you will keep an open mind. That, you know, we come in here, I don't know a whole lot about how school boards operate, how administrations operate. But we come in here when there are concerns that we think are affecting us as parents, for our kids. And I hope that you won't make a decision until you've heard all the information. So that's what I am really hoping for here. Whatever you decide, you know, don't assume an outcome, please. And I think, I guess that's all I want to say at this point. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm Richard Smith. And first of all, I appreciate that, Kari, like you and I had a quick conversation, but the fact that the board doesn't want to be micromanaging administration for all the good reasons that are out there. But I think occasionally, sometimes, it's good to hear that, you know, and I know there are lots of great teachers and so forth, but occasionally, sometimes it's good to hear from the folks saying, hey, this is, this really is an important person. And we know that the administration has tough decisions to make, but we want to make it clear that this is, this is a special resource that we hope you'll think again about. And I understand the constraints you're working under, but, but we think that's our job as parents to come and make that plea to you guys and hopefully you'll hear and understand that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Carl Michael Smith. I was a senior last year and I used Jim pretty much as much as I could. I thought he was one of the most important teachers for me. He was the only teacher I actually made a card for when I was leaving, so if that proves anything. It was always nice to have like the same face whenever I was learning to fix a math problem. And he didn't make it much about like strictly learning everything he needs to know, just like boom, 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 nab, dab. He was more like, oh, come on in, you know, joke around a little bit, let's figure out the problem in this nice calm environment and make you feel safe. And he was just perfect for so many people. I don't think, I ever heard a bad word about Jim. And I don't think, I mean, other math teachers could say that about themselves.
Great, thank you. So we don't appear to have a green team, so we'll see if anybody shows up and right on, oh, I'm sorry, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 3rd? And Karen, any comments? I have one. At the bottom of the first page, which is page 8 of the packet, there's a sentence that reads, Scott Thompson had asked, under what circumstances would the board reverse an earlier decision regarding the budget? I recall Charlie asking that question.
No, it was actually me.
It was you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Charlie would have asked it if I hadn't asked it.
Great. Sorry to misremember. One second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or staying? Okay, so that passes. So we're going to move on to 3.2, this budget process. I asked that we add this to the agenda so that before we delve into the specifics of the white table, we give some thought to the process that we use in our way of making these decisions. So, so just as a reminder, back in November, December era, right after the initial meeting by the finance committee, we got some information and we basically established our parameters, what we were looking for from this year's budget. And basically, I think the one parameter that we set explicitly was that it come in under 3% in terms of expenses. Knowing that we're probably going to see a reduction in students and that would mean a greater increase in terms of per pupil expenditures. I think it was probably implicit, it certainly was in part of the resulting discussions of what impact would this have on student learning outcomes. But essentially, we, we set that one parameter. And, and then, not being experts in education, we asked the administration to create a plan and budget that conforms to that. That's what we got back. And we approved that and, you know, sort of made our way until we started hearing from teachers, students, and parents that they weren't necessarily happy with part of our decision, asked us to reconsider, and that's where we are now. So I'd like us to, I guess it was your question that got me thinking about this, which is, under what circumstances would we reconsider this? And I didn't, I don't have a good answer for that. We haven't done that, it's not been our practice for the six years I've been on the board. And so I've kind of struggled with, how do we do that? And I've got three things I'd ask us to think about as we go into this. One is, if the, if the criteria for the decision here is public support, teacher, student, parent, and I'm glad that that support exists, I think it's, I don't know Jim, but it sounds like it's really wonderful. Are we being fair to the other people in the other positions? Because we didn't broadcast that they're being reduced, we didn't invite comment about them. If we got that kind of feedback, I don't know exactly what we'd do with it, but I just, I have a concern about that type of criteria. And I just ask us to consider that. Secondly, I think we had to think very carefully about undermining the authority of our administrators. Because we basically asked them for something, they provided it, and now we're reconsidering that. And so I want to be very careful that we're not setting them up to, and future boards, to get pushback. People don't like a decision, but they, all they have to do is, you know, push back and then the board will reconsider. And that puts our administrators in a challenging position potentially, I think. Really carefully think about that. And the third thing, I think that we should think about is that, I don't think that this is a question of if this position will be reduced, it's more a question of when. Given the trends that the school is facing, we're going to see reductions over time. And, you know, if we're going to, you know, accomplish our top priority of preserving classroom teachers, this is the kind of position that we're going to have to look at in the future. So I think one of the things that we might want to think about is asking the administration for a longer-term plan that we would get to review and potentially approve, that will provide context for these decisions in the future. So that we have an understanding of how is this going to happen? How is this reduction in expenses, personnel expenses and other expenses going to happen over time? Because this is a multi-year process that we're a part of. And I hate to see us sort of making decisions, you know, in a hurt me jerky sort of, you know, one year at a time fashion, if we can avoid that. So I think that's something that we might want to think about after we conclude this process, is asking for something that provides that longer-term context. So those are my thoughts and I'm going to open it up for discussion. If people want to talk about the process before we get into the specifics.
Perhaps we should also, I mean, if we're talking, you introduced your three considerations, all of which I think are sound. With reference to the expenditures, so perhaps as part of this process also be useful to know how much Jim, the white table with Jim costs. The other, it's a strange sort of situation we find ourselves in. Carl, last time, Carl, you were talking about, we should, that this is about positions, not about individual people. And I think, in a sense, that's true, but in the reality of the life of the school and how, you know, student learning, the individual turns out to be pretty significant. So I guess we have to, we have to kind of straddle that, you know, that dilemma of position versus person, or position and person together. And then, of course, just student learning. You know, if, I think, the value of this position-person, or person-position, or whatever kind of amalgam you're talking about, the value of that for kids actually learning math. And not just learning it to do well in the test, but learning it to, for life anyway, so as not to be mathophobic by their experience.
In relation to what you both said, what I heard you say, Carrie.
Carrie.
Carrie, geez, that's, yeah, after you already corrected me once, I apologize. I see what, I get your point about support and that, and I was pretty moved by the support of the students. And I'm eager not to put a damper on that. But it is a funny issue, isn't it? On one hand, you sort of, for lack of a better word, populism. You know, the force of a lot of people getting the better behind one idea and pushing it hard to forward their goal. And the other is the role of people who are trying to balance that against other interests that may not be as well-organized or as vocal, or both. But at this point, keeping an open mind, at this point, I feel as though the support of the students trumps the other considerations. Because I really feel strongly, I feel that, I feel that the worst thing, that, I feel that there's a danger that we create a sense of fatality or cynicism amongst students if they don't feel that they can have some influence on the choice of who teaches them. But that's got to be some strings, so I hear you loudly clearly, but that's sort of what I'm.
And maybe that's where that longer-term plan can come to bear.
Yeah.
If the students participate in creating that plan, maybe, or buy-in. Other thoughts?
So I agree with everything you've said, Kari. My question is, so what about that parent who's paying for the chemistry tutor? Or the physics tutor? Or the foreign language, you know? I mean, how does that come into play? You know, there is no white table for the chem tutor, or for the sciences, or for the foreign languages, or for the arts, or for any of that, for, you know, English. And it is, you know, it is a matter of when, you know, when is this going to happen? You know? When are we going to hit a population balance where we're going to say, wow, we didn't need that big fancy track out there? I mean, because, you know, the kids are actually participating in cross-country, or, you know, the gym class is so small that they could, you know, use another facility. So, I mean, we were given a task and that was to, you know, come up with a budget that worked. And I think we agreed on that budget. And we said it worked.
All right, so maybe we should shift into the next topic, which is getting more into the specifics. What we approved last time, I believe, was asking the administration to present a more detailed plan of how the function would be fulfilled without that position.
So the model that we're following is similar to the model that the English department has done for the past two years. So the English department is teaching four classes and then they're conferencing with kids for the fifth. So every teacher is contracted really to teach five of the eight blocks that we have. We also have a provision in their contract where they can teach an additional assignment for one semester called the sixth assignment. And so with the English department, what we had worked is that they would do four classes, which was the same number of kids that they were teaching in the five. But they would use that extra time to conference with kids more individually, or smaller, usually no more than two, is what I've seen. So we looked at that same model for the math department. So our math department reduced the number of courses that they teach, sections that they teach, not courses, but sections that they teach. So that most of our math teachers are going to be teaching four classes next year, and that their remaining time is going to be used to staff the white table and to meet with their own kids. And so, so the way that breaks down is that six of the eight blocks would be able to be covered by the teachers that are there. That's the equivalent of 1.6 teachers, so 1.6 FTEs to cover the math white table. In addition to that, the math department already does two full positions worth of interventions in the middle school and algebra and geometry classes. So we have, when we, when we talk about the commitment of our math teachers to interventions, we're talking about 3.6 FTEs is what we commit already to those interventions. So those teachers would be, you know, each semester, the schedule would change a little bit from semester to semester, but the way we've got it planned for right now is that the same teacher would be there, the same block for an entire semester. So say the third block on Blue Day, I don't know which teacher that is, but there would be one teacher that would be there all semester on that day. And the same for all, but two of the blocks during those times. They're looking at those two blocks as being, one of them is when all, there's three Algebra II classes, which is the highest use of the white table this year, or by Algebra II students. There are three classes during one of those blocks. They feel like being at the white table during that block doesn't make a whole lot of sense when 50, over 50% of the kids who come would be in class. So that was one that would seem reasonable. And then the other one was the lowest usage time is block one. And so they were looking at that as well, as being the two that they would recover during the time. I would say that, you know, when we think about departments as a whole, the math department has the most FTEs of any department. It's 10.6. The English or literacy is 10 FTEs, science is 10, global studies is 8.6, and world languages is 5.4. And then special education is 10, and Vaca is 7.8, when you look at our numbers across the schools. So those are the number of teachers that we have in each of those departments. I would say that's, these are some of the things we looked at. You know, if we, if you, if you were to say that we should staff the white table with somebody other than the current math faculty, then we are overstaffed in our math department because every one of those teachers that's teaching four should go to five, because that, they wouldn't have that assignment contractually. And then we should reduce the number of math teachers that we have. So we would essentially be eliminating a, in this case, we would be eliminating a newer math teacher that, for a retired math teacher to staff the white table. I mean, that's kind of how we looked at it. We looked at the model that was working for English and that our role and fellow, Alden Bird, has really been working with a lot of our teachers around, is the idea that we conference with kids, that we don't just, we don't just have just a drop-in kind of model, but that we actually schedule time with kids outside of class who need support. For our math department, the freshman and sophomore math classes don't need that, because they already have the students who need support, the majority of students who need support already have an algebra lab or a geometry lab. So they already have the teacher for two math blocks essentially during the, during the course of the eight blocks. And so when we look at how much intervention we provide for reading and how much we provide for math, it's pretty evenly split until you throw in the math white table, and then math has almost twice as much intervention time as the reading does. So, I mean, I think these are all things that we thought about in administration when we thought about how to staff the position, or what to do with these kinds of staff.
This is an old chestnut that may not apply anymore, but U32 has always sort of been thought of as pretty strong, the, the accent, something, the language, English, and weaker than the math and sciences. And is that still, does, do the, do the performance test evidence of weakness in math?
Tend to point that same direction, yes.
So would that be a reason maybe for supporting a little higher FTC and FTE rather than math?
Well, we do.
Yeah, right.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's part of, I mean, the number of interventions that we provide in math are higher than the number of interventions we provide in our reading and writing programs already. An additional position on top of that would just add more to it, you know, in terms of the support.
Oh, the measurements you were doing were without the math?
Without having a, not, without having the position of math white table as a separate position.
The 10.6 FTE is without white table?
Correct. It's with the teacher staffing.
Got it.
How long has this model been in place in English?
This is the second year of that model.
And we don't have that kind of tier-two support in science?
Generally, kids will seek out their science teachers during callback or before, after school, is the way that they get support there.
This is really fascinating case, because, I mean, you've just made a very strong structural argument, I think. And if I didn't know anything other than what you have said, I would say, huh, open and shut. However, there's, there's a pragmatic dimension to this that seems to be very important. And the, I mean, I have, I don't know, did you have a chance to see Ginger's, Ginger Knight's, Why Jim at Math White Table Matters to Us? Did you see this?
I haven't seen that one specifically, no. I've seen, I've got.
You've seen others?
I have petitions on my desk, I have emails from parents and students, I have, I have a lot. So Scott, I would just say, this is, for me, making this decision has to be on the business side, because there are other people who are reducing in force that have no one who has ever come here and spoken for them. And, and so, I mean, if it's a popularity contest for who we keep in the school, I said, you know.
He wins.
I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question.
Sorry, Charlie. I'm in bad form. I, I hear what you're saying. I, I don't think it's a popularity contest. I value the input that the community has brought here. And I don't, sure, they like Jim, but I don't think it's because they liked Jim that they're saying that this is such a valuable issue. So I would not characterize it as just a popularity contest, although that's always a concern.
Right. When I, when I sort of try to understand, try to, you know, get a sense of what people were saying, what this testimony actually meant, that was one of my questions. Is it just because he's beloved to like, you know, Mr. Chips or something? Or is something happening that's important to learning? And when I, it seems, the evidence to me, the personal testimony, not just from, you know, parents and former students, alumni, but present students, students not only who use the white table, but students who are classmates and friends as students who use the white table. Are the unanimity of opinion is really quite striking. And I think it's impossible to, for me, to ignore, the business argument, structural argument is compelling, you know, as far as it goes. But I just have to, you know, come back to what we're here for. And if kids are learning math, if there are kids who are learning math who would not otherwise be learning math as well, or as successfully, then I think, you know, the presence of this resources on a pragmatic basis is justified. And I would, you know, even if it's structurally problematic or ungainly, or, you know, the work chart is not pretty, or whatever it might be, if something works, my inclination is, let's do that. And try to figure out some way to sustain it and build around it and because, as we all know, you know, it could be, I think you were saying, Karen, last time, who knows? You know, Jim is a retired teacher. He might, he might get sick, he might decide that Vermont winters are too much for him. But I think my own sense is that when you've got something good going, you try to, try to, you know, get as much value as we can from it.
So, one of the issues I have is, you know, most of this emotional pouring is, thank goodness for this, this worked for me, you know? And I know there's certain ways I learned, or something worked for me, but that doesn't work for you, or for you. And we don't know that the 10.6 math teachers doing the same thing, being present at the white table, where I can come say, hey, help me out with this, I'm not getting this Algebra II problem, can you help me through this? Having that same space with those people, we don't know that that won't be just as helpful, because it hasn't been tried. Right? We do not know that that won't be just as good and just as helpful, if not more so.
More personalities.
Well, yeah, and, you know, so Joe Bob teacher didn't help me, but Kristy teacher, I understand how she explained it, there's different, I don't know. I'm just saying, we, we're acting like the solution that has been given to us from administration is doomed to fail, it's not going to work. It's not that the white table is shoved in the closet and not happening. They didn't get rid of it. They're keeping the fundamentals, have come up with a solution. And I understand going down to, each of them would only be teaching four, yeah, we're cutting a highly trained math teacher. We're just going to cut a teacher then, to have someone at this table. Right?
I think.
Unless we say we're not cutting.
No. Well.
Which is necessarily responsible for what we charged them to do.
I think the kind of, the kind of thing, when I talk about being pragmatic and sort of recognizing when there's a, there's a resource of unusual value that one is lucky enough to have, and trying to, you know, realize as much of that value as possible, rather than, you know, if we think about the strategic approach. rather than, you know, if we think about the strategic approach that you're talking about currently, I could see, I mean, I, I apologize because-
It's okay.
-just trampling all over your turf, but-
Scott, you can just say it, I'm, I'm okay.
But I could, thank you, Stephen.
Yeah.
I could envision, for example, having, because Jim is a veteran teacher himself, he's, he's a para right now because he's retired and basically is doing this for fun, and I guess a little bit of profit. But he potentially, as a, as a member of the math faculty, you know, as a, as a senior and a junior member, he's potentially a resource to help some of the teachers maybe teach better. Because from what I understand from, from Lucy, Mia, and your compadres, is that Jim is, really knows how to get, how to explain things, how to get it across. He could be like a coach even. He could, he could work his own transition out of U32 by helping train up the, the, perhaps, the other math teachers, helping to expand their repertoire of, of math teaching skills. I don't know, that's just totally, it's the kind of thing that one could do with a resource, just in theory.
I see the deadlines are being drawn, friendly, but nevertheless. I agree, I hear you love them clearly, that we don't know if it will succeed. What we do know is it's succeeding now, and there's a risk that it won't work as well. And my supposition is that it won't work as well because of the response that we've gotten from, from students in regard to the relations with the other teachers. One of the things I really like about having Jim here, a guy that I don't know at all, is, is the fact that it breaks the homogeneity, homogeneity a little bit of the school, to have somebody a little different, not quite a teacher, somebody different. And I think that helps, helps the, the culture of the school to have more of that rather than more of, people all graduating with the same degree, degrees, all sort of, yeah, I'd like to have, I'd like to see a greater diversity, and I think this provides it, especially when you consider the range of, of responses that students have to various teaching types. You're right, one teacher, Jim works well, Joe Bob works well for one person, or Christie works well for another. That, I would argue, would suggest supports the notion that we ought to keep Steve, Jim as yet another one, another person who may reach students who are not otherwise reached.
But then Georgia's argument, then we need a white table for science, and we need one for, we need one for almost every category.
I, can I just point out one other thing, is that now we're going back to the person instead of the position.
I agree.
And I think we just need to-
But I'm willing to do that.
Yeah.
I strongly believe that. I, I do not put business ahead of, of education. That's one of the reasons that, that I understand the legislature shows the, uh, denominate superintendents as chief executive officers. We're not a corporation, we're a school. We don't train people, we educate people. And that means critical thinking, and that means a kind of input. It sounds like what happens if they, if they math table, so, anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, not every subject is the same, and what you're saying is one for one for one, right, like, uh, science and English have to have one math white table person. And that's just not true. Math is a whole different beast. I know kids who've broken down from math, you know, and I think it's not the same as all the other subjects. You don't need a person for white table for, you know, biology, because they can, you know, work it out with themselves or with your teachers eas- easily. But with Jimmy, has a whole nother perspective to math, a whole nother attitude towards math. And I, I don't think he's here for the money, to be honest. His kids each make very good money, he's talked about it a lot of times in class. I think he'll be doing whatever he wants. He enjoys this thoroughly, he loves working with the kids, and that's something you can't bring in from this, this highly-trained math teacher, right? Like, he can either be highly-trained in math or highly-trained in teaching, and every student would rather have a highly-trained teacher than a highly-trained mathematician.
I get it. I totally get it. There are teachers who got it and teachers who don't. I totally get it, but I, you know, I still-
I just want to say again, from my perspective, I'm really uncomfortable because I don't see it as our role.
I agree with that.
I, I think that, I'm nowhere, I'm, I'm nowhere near an expert in education. I actually know, being on this board for six years, it's surprising to me how little I know about education. But I do know that we've hired some excellent, highly-trained, very experienced people to make these decisions for us. And if we can't articulate why it's a bad decision before the decision is made, then we shouldn't really be worried about it. I, I feel like we're going for some bounds, saying it was a bad decision after the fact.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying necessarily it was a bad decision, just that in light of information that has come in, and I think it is our role, definitely not to second-guess or micromanage or in any way constrain the people, the very, the excellent people that we hired. In fact, my aim is to enable as much as possible, enable the, the highest performance possible, and to be just sounding board and to, to relay concerns that we pick up and try to form together a, a greater mind in order to, you know, to make, for instance.
But can I sort of call the questions? Because we don't have a motion on the table.
Right. Before we do that, I just wanted to make sure that Carl or Jonathan, you have anything you want to add at this point?
Well, everybody, I think, is making valid points, I'll say that. Some I agree more with than others, but, but I think, I wasn't at the last meeting, but the meeting prior, I, I believe I said something to the effect, when, when so many of the teachers were here and students were here as well, to me, that was very impactful to hear directly from them. So that's that. The other thing is, math is unlike many of the other academic subjects in the school in the sense that, for, I mean, I can't remember exactly how long I've been on the board, but quite a long time. And we've struggled, the school has struggled, and nationally, we struggle with math in a way that's different than every other academic subject. So in my mind, if there's an additional support, and I know we have additional teachers, and the school, I think, is doing everything, we're doing everything we can to support math, you know, I, I, my personal view is that having additional supports even beyond, above and beyond what we already have in place, is probably a good idea with respect to math, because the numbers come back every year. And, and so, that, to me, means that we, we should, we should err on the side of, let's try to do whatever we can conceivably to, to help the kids achieve in math. So. Just one other thing, too. I don't see the equivalence between a full-time FTE math teacher and a very part-time white table person from a budgetary perspective. They're not the same thing. This, Jim is not receiving benefits, is he? Oh, he is, okay.
Jim's a full-time employee with benefits.
He is, okay, all right. Okay, so I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so, you know, maybe, maybe there needs to be some, some looking at, you know, what that cost is, but, but the other, the other, the other, I mean, in keeping with kind of my argument already, I would say if we needed an extra teacher, we should have an extra teacher in math. And if it's the white table position, then it should be the white table position. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I come down on that. So.
Carl?
I'm not sure I have anything new to add. I, I, there's a piece of me that's intrigued by the argument of when we're gonna write size versus whether we're gonna write size. I mean, there, there's an art, hey, bargain great teacher, who's, who's, who wants to shake his stick at that, you know? But if that bargain great teacher is short-term and is gonna be in the place of a longer-term permanent full-time teacher, I don't think that's an appropriate choice to make. So I, you know, I wouldn't say, oh, let's, let's trim the math department by a, by a full, by a, by a full FTE so that we can keep a beloved and successful white table position. There's a piece of me that, you know, it's working. I don't want to take away something that's working, you know, if it's working, don't fix it. But like Karen says, we don't know that it won't work the other way. And there's, actually, I'm gonna go all the way back to Scott's question of the other week, is when would we, as a board, change our mind about something that we had come to? I got no qualms changing our mind when we've got new information to act on. I don't have any qualms about that at all. I'm, I'm not sure, I really feel like we have new information to act on. We may have gotten more information since we made the original decision, but I'm not sure it's really new information. I don't think we, you know, nobody said to us, you know, Jim's, Jim's not the best math teacher, you know? We, we didn't know we were, we were letting go of somebody really good when we made that decision originally. And I think the argument, the sort of fairness argument of other staff that have been like, oh, I don't know how, I think we would need a really solid justification for doubling that on one person, one person doing right versus the other seven that were on that same list. I think it'd be pretty hard, you know? I think we'd be, I think we'd need a really solid explanation of why. And I'm not sure we could muster that, but I'm not sure it makes sense with our longer-term goal of red sizing the school. And yes, it's a crummy position to be in to have to make these kind of calls, you know? The, the soft part of me wants to say, hey, great teacher, hold on to this, you know, just cling to him for another three, four years until he's ready to move Florida or whatever, you know? But, but if that doesn't work with our, with our, if that doesn't work with the staffing of our math program longer term, I don't, don't see how we can make that a choice.
Okay, back to you. Karen, do you have the job?
Oh, just, I mean, I guess we're having lovely discussions, but-
You said call the question, the question.
Is someone gonna make a motion? Are you gonna do anything, or?
We're gonna do something.
I think it's a great idea. It's, it's, I move that we keep Jim. Get on the table. Did you, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, I'll second it.
Just, I think we've all thought about it long and hard, and every position I've heard so far has got integrity, so let's do what you think is right.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second discussion?
How would I work that, though?
Do you want to shine on that?
Should we retain the current staffing, uh, this current staff for the white table? Thanks.
Math white table.
Right. What?
Math white table.
Math white table, thank you, thank you.
And I assume implied in that is that we would have to figure out the expense some other way.
These are the balloon, yeah, yeah.
And, and for our knowledge, it's, what are we talking about, forty thousand dollars?
Approximately, maybe a little, a little less.
If we need non-personal, since we're past the, we're-
We're past the rich stage.
Past.
Unless, unless there was a personality left and-
Oh, interesting.
May I?
Other discussion?
Yes. Is it possible to pull it from the, I'm blanking on the name of the reserve, not the reserve fund, but the-
Fund balance?
The fund balance.
The board would have to approve that. I, I wouldn't recommend that. I mean, I would recommend that you direct me to, to find it within the existing budget.
Really? Would you have a, you have something in mind?
No. I mean, there's-
I mean, that decision doesn't need to be made tonight.
Yes, yes, right. And, and I, it's not so much my business.
Present issue being-
Yeah.
More discussion? Everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was three. All those opposed, aye?
Neat.
Aye.
It's three. So the chair will break a tie by voting aye.
What do you?
And, you know, or, or is that, that's a rotten position to be in?
Yeah.
That's why we're paid to do this. Okay, um, let's move on to 3.4 proficiency-based graduation apartments. So let me just introduce this. We had asked for this, obviously, a topic of great importance and some confusion, some concern. And so we wanted to get a little bit of, you know, refresher on, on what, what it's all about and what's the current state of things and where we're headed.
Yeah. So I wanted to make sure that everybody had the booklet. So I think at some point in time, we have handed these to everyone, but this is really a, a great way for, if you spend a few moments with it, for you to be able to talk to others about it. I think there's some, some pretty straightforward things that would maybe help you as a board when people ask you questions about it. Kind of one of the biggest, one of the biggest pieces of proficiency-based system is that we are no longer depending on time in a seat to determine whether or not somebody is ready to graduate. It's now moved, and I heard it explained much better, is that students have to demonstrate as opposed, you know, as opposed to the past where they just participate, you know? And so, so they just have to demonstrate an understanding. I, I mean, let's make it clear. We, we're changing 120 years of, of thought in how students demonstrate their knowledge. And, and it was in the past, you sat in a class for what's considered a Carnegie Unit of Time, which is 120 hours, that gives you a full credit of as long as you've got at least a D in the class, in the way that our system, it's defined differently in other schools, you know, it can be a C in other schools, or, or, or something different. But it was always 120 hours. Now, what we're really trying to do is create a system where our kids learn, our student learning outcomes are the guide and the standards that are associated with that, which that's part of the booklet to show you which, the student learning outcomes that we have. But, but, you know, we're trying to make sure that kids can show us that they know something before they leave, so that they're ready for both college and career. And I think that that's the, kind of the heart of what a proficiency system is. Our theory of action that we have used in our implementation plan for all of the work that we're doing as a supervisory union, said that we needed three things. We needed clear learning outcomes, we needed high-quality instruction, and we needed a balanced assessment system. All of those three things are part of what we do for a proficiency-based education system. Now, I think that-
Will you mind seeing those a little time?
Okay, so there's, we, we, sorry, but, we, clear learning outcomes, high-quality instruction-
That's all right.
And a, and a balanced assessment system. And so, the work that we've done over the past three years as a staff has been to try to, to do those three things to create a system that's built on proficiency. It's messy. I mean, like, there's just no two ways about it. Our kids aren't always, it's not always clear what the learning targets are. The assessments we're being, you know, are being built along the way. And, and there's always the argument, is all of these things should have been taken care of before, but there's no way to move to a new system while you're educating kids in which you don't do some of the work while you're doing the work. And so, I think we're in a, I mean, I think it's, I, I defer to the kids on, on some of this, is that, is that what was really confusing three years ago is less confusing now, because our teachers have been doing it for multiple years now. The kids are starting to see it in different ways. The seniors are just happy that they're in the system, they're still credit system as they go out. But, but we're starting to see, I, I think a good example is I sat with a parent and kid the other day, and we looked through where they were. And the student had already shown that they had reached advanced levels of performance in their math classes, some of their science, or their math standards, some of their science standards, they've met their, you know, they've- some of their science standards, they'd met their, you know, they'd met several in, like, TE at Health, so they were completing those. And so now, you know, what's left is this kid moves into their senior year. They need their artistic expression and they need to do some, a little more work in their science. And they figure, given how they're doing right now, that they're going to meet their literacy standards in their 11th grade year. So what we're really saying, and then the question that the parents asked me, which I think is a really great question, is that is he ready both for early college next year? And we can look at it, we can say, yeah, you know, he's proficient at worst in most of his stuff, in most of his graduation standards. And so that's, to us, means that he's ready for college. Now, he won't have quite everything, but that's okay. In early college, you can go take a couple of courses that help you meet. I mean, if you pass a college course, you've shown us that you're proficient in college-level work, which means you can graduate. I mean, that's kind of the gist of it. And so, I mean, there's a thousand little details that our teachers and our students are working through on all of this. But I think the message that we're starting to see now is that our kids are starting to understand that they have to do something to be able to graduate. And we had a lot of kids in multiple different areas who may have just gotten by with a D in something. And so that D is no longer really a valid grade anymore. And we want to make sure that you're prepared when you leave U32 so that you don't have to take remedial courses, that you can begin a certificate program, that you can enter the workforce with, you know, a decent amount of skills so that you're ready and able to do those things. That's what a proficiency system really is built on. We're, we've gone headfirst in that, but, I mean, I defer to you guys. I mean, we have a celebrity when it comes to proficiency. If you listen to the podcasts, but I haven't yet. Kari's one. But I don't know, is there, what would you guys add to?
Well, I'm in the grade that is graduating first.
Guinea pig grade.
Yes. Oh, well, funny you say that, Stephen, because I remember a ninth-grade presentation you made to us where you said, you will not be the Guinea pigs.
I think you missed something.
No, but, well, I was actually just looking at my graduation standard proficiencies in IC, which were made available to us this year. And I would say that it is more clear now than it was three or four years ago, but it still seems very, it still seems fuzzy, I guess, and not completely clear. And especially like, because it, I think what makes it most confusing is that it differentiates between class to class. So some teachers do it differently than other teachers, and some teachers are moving completely away from the old grading system and some, and completely transforming to proficiencies and making their class fit proficiencies. But some teachers are using the old grading system and their old classes and trying to make proficiencies fit to the old system. And those are the classes where it's not working out as well. But it also, there are different ways to go. So for science and math, it's harder in some places and easier in others. But then in English, it's easier and harder in others. And it just, the whole thing seems a little. And it also, a lot of kids say that, like, oh, we're not going to get into college, which is obviously not a valid word. But it does seem, because it, for us, it's hard to understand our final grades. So I think in that sense, that's why kids are worried about how others are going to see it because if you yourself can't understand how you're being assessed and your scores, then it's hard to understand how somebody else is going to understand them.
So in regard to the elements of the program that Stephen talked to, which are clear learning outcomes, high-quality instruction, balanced assessment, do you feel like those are being achieved?
Could you say this three again?
Sure. What is clear learning outcomes, high-quality instruction, balanced assessment? Those are kind of hard things to get.
Okay.
Clear learning outcomes, maybe, huh?
Yeah. I would say that I've seen all the standards, I'm looking at all the standards right now. So it's, they, I know what all of the outcomes are. It's, I think what's confusing is how you achieve them sometimes and then how you're being assessed on achieving them. Because it, sometimes it falls to the teachers. What the teacher gets to decide in some places, it's sometimes not as straightforward. So in math, it might be more straightforward because it can be clearly seen whether you were able to answer a question or not. But in English, it might be more inferentialist, whether, how you were analyzing the book in what ways.
So do you think that the, those two areas, the, I'm just, clear learning outcomes and balanced assessment, do you feel like those are areas that are improving as we get more and more familiar with proficiency?
Yeah, I'm not sure what balanced assessment entails, but.
Well, you talked to cross disciplines, which I thought was kind of interesting. I don't know if that's, I'm sorry.
The questions are good.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would, that's, because it seems that you have to fit proficiencies in. So I perform differently in each of the subjects because in some places it's easier to get the four in part because it's what I'm better at, but also because the teacher grades it differently than as to in science where it might be harder or in math. Because those are subjects where I struggle, but it's also not as clear it seems, or harder to achieve.
I think there's definitely more discrepancies because I get graded with proficiency in some of my classes in things like English and foreign language because they're a little bit less cut and dry than like math and science. So math and science, it's more like, did they answer the questions? Did they like maybe do the eccentric to get the four? But like in English, like, reading a paper is so like subjective to the teacher, so it's much harder for teachers to be consistent. Not really like through any fault of their own, there just needs to be more consistent requirements for those classes.
And I, I mean, I would argue too, that those are age-old problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not really the new problem. I think that one of the things that we've tried to, the clear learning target piece is that, what does it mean? Like, and part of it too is that we don't have a tremendous amount of what we call exemplars. You know, what does a four-level paper look like? Because we don't have, or we haven't had in the past, a whole lot of those kinds of discussions around.
We can get you some of Scott's.
And so vocabulary use would be high. Sorry, I had to take my one home. But I mean, I think that that's, that's the thing is that they're correct on that. The confusion is some of the same areas that were confusing before, but we didn't really acknowledge that they were confusing in the old system. Your D sometimes came from turning in homework, from participating in class and being nice while you were there. And those kinds of things were, they're important, but not necessarily important to show that you understand the content of the class. And so those, yeah, so another piece of this is separating out the work habits, the, what we call the transferable skills, from the content knowledge. And I would argue that that isn't, our choice of pulling those two things apart and holding them equal in terms of their importance is one of the defining characteristics of the way that U32 has approached proficiency. Because other schools have approached it to where we keep the old grading system around content knowledge and we'll evaluate your transferable skills separately. You get your old grading through the content. You do the right thing around transferable skills in terms of demonstrating that, and then you graduate. That's one of the ways, when you talk about the differences in how schools approach that, which means that are you, what's the standard of performance that you're asking for in the content area? Isn't necessarily changed in, when you keep the old system of grading, right? It, there's still a fair amount of the content knowledge being in the A, B, C, D, F system, that most schools, we used E here, but in that system, if you, if you still grade that way in the content knowledge, you don't get to those three questions of, are you making it clear? Are you working on your instruction and are you assessing the students in multiple ways? That's what a balanced system means. That it's not just one way of assessing you, but you can demonstrate it multiple different ways as to how you can learn something. And that's the idea that a paper for one kid may be a video for another, right? If the content can be demonstrated through both of those things equally well, then we shouldn't look at that, the assessment of those things any differently. You know, it's the content, did you demonstrate that you knew the content through whichever medium that you used? Some of the old system is do the paper or do a video or do, and the variety wasn't necessarily there because the grade was about the product and completing it, not about the content that was within that product. That got a little confusing, but.
No.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
So this was, this is another mandate from state government, right, that we moved to the system.
Proficiency, yes.
And my understanding is Maine also adopted the system and then pulled back. So are there other states, is this part of a larger movement?
So many, the Northeast has been particularly robust in this in changing some of the rules around graduation. So I know in Connecticut, where I came from before, they changed the state law so that students didn't just have to do seat time, they also had the option of demonstrating, let's see, they called theirs competency-based.
Yes. New Hampshire's in a mastery, I can go to New Hampshire.
New Hampshire.
As well, yeah.
So more adaptable.
Yeah, for New Hampshire, it came through, it didn't come through legislation, it came through state board regulate, through the State Department regulation and competency-based and that all high schools, I think they were last year, all high schools had to graduate based on a competency-based system. It's either last year or this very year, senior.
I think it's the same with, yeah.
And Rhode Island's a year away, a year behind ours, and they call theirs competency, their mastery-based.
So there's, there's four different terms that are used for this. Standards-based, competency-based, mastery-based, and proficiency-based. Just depends on which state you're working in.
And this is the normal educational league that happens in the United States.
Each one sells a different book.
There is a movement, at least in the Northeast. There's one more question I got to you, Jennifer. How will we know, or can we now, down the road and looking back, if a student graduating from U32 under proficiency-based actually knows more or has more skills than under the old system?
So for that, we need, we would probably need an external measure of some kind. So things like, I mean, there are the national standardized tests. So the SAT, the ACT, the S-Back, those are ways that we.
And they measure proficiency?
So the SAT is trying to move that way. The ACT is probably a little bit better because it's subject area.
I'm going to argue that they can't. Assessment's been a area of my master's work and we're going to get into what we call depths of knowledge and how deep. The highest way, and this is the effect of Charlie talking about, applying your knowledge and being able to communicate it and critical thinking and problem-solving, which are all our transferable skills, that can be measured in authentic classroom assessments. It's really hard to measure those on a standardized test.
Yeah, absolutely.
So do you have any thoughts about my question?
You will not be able to do comparables across because we didn't have those before. We'll be able to measure going forward as we make better assessments, more common assessments. And that's one of the things that I've seen with my time here is that we just started having common assessments across classrooms.
Right.
Not even across grade levels, just across classrooms. So if you were taking Algebra I in one class and one in the other, until what, three years ago, Stephen? Four? It was, it's been just shortly that they've aligned the assessments. So if I sit in this teacher's classroom and this teacher's classroom were using this common assessment, not all of them, the formatives should be what you need to know and how, you know, what I'm doing in my classroom today doesn't need to be the same. But there's got to be some common assessments across to be able to understand are the kids in this class and this class able to do the same thing?
So, and I would say the other standard to measure that we might want to use, I mean, is the, is what are our kids doing in four years and in six years? You know, and how do we get at that data? You know, there's the National Clearinghouse data around college. But what are our students doing? You know, were they able to move through programs beyond here? You know, were they, are there more opportunities for those kids? Or the, you know, for those that go straight into the workforce, are they earning better livings, you know, as a result of the work that we do here? Stuff that we didn't really measure well before, but I think are the important measures of whether or not our graduates are successful.
Now, Kari, I would add that, I think, in theory, at least to a little bit, different populations of students are going to benefit from this differently. To my mind, proficiency-based serves the student that struggled more under the old system. The D student is going to be served better by the proficiency-based education because we're not going to let them slip through the system anymore. And so that mean, if we did have mechanisms for measuring, how did it work 10 years ago? Does it work 10 years from now? You know, a Lucy might not show any big change. You know, she's going to come out of here with the same proficiencies, sort of regardless of how we measure it. It's the students who we might let slip through the system that are going to see you a little bit, to my mind. Jennifer?
Jennifer?
Yeah, I have a couple comments. First of all, you know that you can delay proficiency for a year. There's no requirement that you have to have it for graduating seniors next year. The AOE has made that very clear, so if you wanted to delay it, I'd be all for it. I think that the rollout was really rough. You're getting rid of a whole semester of grades for the ninth graders who are graduating next year. So I hope that you're aware of that, the board, that the board is aware of that, that you are not locked into next year as the first year for using it for grading. Secondly, the Vermont Legislature had a professor from UVM come in to talk about proficiencies. And she's a teacher of teachers. And she indicated that if you want to have a robust proficiency-based grading system, then you have to actually have three things. You need to have personalized learning plans, you need to have flexible pathways, you need to have proficiency-based assessment. And all of them need to be equally robust. At U32, they're not. The PLPs are not at all robust. The kids take them, they write in whatever baloney they have to write in to get out of TA.
We know what you really were about to say.
Yeah, I was, but I held that. And, and so I really, you have talked about proficiencies for the past 15 minutes and not once had anybody mentioned PLPs and not once had anybody mentioned flexible pathways. I really think that if you want to, if you want to do proficiencies, you got to do it right. And it's not going to work if you don't. And so it's a little, I'm kind of surprised you're talking about proficiencies four years after you've started doing it. I'm wondering why this wasn't brought up. I mean, I suspect it was brought up. But what we're talking is if it's just starting, rather than where are we and how is it going? This sounds like you're still getting up to speed on what proficiencies even are. So, and yet, for four years, our kids have been in the midst of it. So I would certainly ask that there be more work on this, both for the students, for the personalized learning plans, if you want to keep them proficiencies, and that you really do a much better job of communicating with parents what's going on. You know, for a while, Stephen sent out some emails about proficiencies when they were going through a lot of turmoil over it, which was great. But then it sort of stopped and we haven't gotten anything in a really long time. And we don't get regular updates on how things are going. There was, there were a lot of problems with the website. We had teachers who weren't putting anything in. We had stuff on the website that was not accurate. And so I think, I hope that you as a board really delve into some of this because this is actually what people care about, it's what students care about and it's what, what parents care about when it comes to how the kids are doing in school. And for a long time, for at least two years, maybe even three, you didn't even know how your kid was doing in school because the website was so difficult to navigate. I know Stephen's heard all this, Kurt didn't say all this before, and he's heard it from a lot of other people too. So this isn't new to him, maybe it's new to you. But it has been really problematic and I'm not opposed to it. I think what Carl said is accurate, that it could be a really good system for kids who struggle. And I think that you, a lot of the pushback is coming from parents and kids who do well in school because they succeeded under the old program. And I, and I understand that. But what I'm asking you. But what I'm asking you, if you are gonna do this program, then you really need to make sure you're doing it right. And don't force it on, on families and kids before it's ready.
Let's see, again?
Oh, just, just to be fair, some people haven't been on the board very long and are learning. So, you know, Charlie's just sort of, he doesn't have a kid in the current school like I do. So I, I'm learning from them.
And Charlie will be a pro.
Being drawn off the box.
June 30th.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, that's where it can seem like there's less knowledge about what's going on than there really is, so.
And to be fair, we haven't talked about it.
We haven't talked about it in a few meetings, so.
All right, any other thoughts before we move on?
So, so I, if I can offer one thing, so Jennifer's exactly right. So multiple pathways, the personalized learning plans, those are other things that, that we can bring forward to, to talk to you guys about because they are important pieces. Because there were actually two pieces of, of work. So a lot of what we just talked about was educational quality standards, which set the proficiency work. And the other one was Act 77, which said the personalized learning plans, the multiple pathways were the way to go about all of this. And so there's, there's several pieces of legislation and, and rulemaking that prompted a lot of this work and, and set these dates.
Scott, you get the last word?
Oh my goodness, what a responsibility. There's one aspect of this that may relate to some of the anxieties that parents feel, which is the, the basic effect of, of this tends to be grade-deflationary. That, you know, as you were saying, the, the student who passed with a D is no longer going to be able to pass. And the student who maybe got As under the old system may not get fours under the new system. Fours are really hard to get. So, and, and that's a very interesting development because typically it's a kind of elite move. You know, your public high school A's are worth nothing but Cs, they're a quarter, toy, crap school, kind of thing. But, and, and that's, you know, that's, in some ways, that's good. I mean, to, to just contain what seemed like the, the forever trend in, in grade inflation. But, but I think the anxiety that comes from, you know, the, now the student's market value is measured by a grade point average is now lower than it might have been under the old system. And yet, I guess the exchange rate, it's not, it's not commonly realized that, that this is what U32 has done. So even though I know colleges are saying, oh, proficiency, we understand that it's not gonna make a difference, I think that there may be some justification for, you know, maybe trying harder to, to help those kids who are going out into the higher education market.
So maybe a good topic for June to discuss is the materials that we're preparing and what we're preparing to do as these kids enter the market for colleges. Because we are, we do have a plan that we're bringing together today. Which, we just have to finalize before we share.
Yeah.
But now I have a deadline. Because you guys aren't meeting a whole lot beyond that.
We'll, we'll come back to that at the end of that. Okay, so I'd like to sort of pick up the pace here a little bit. 3.5 is Board Retreats, so this is traditionally the time of year that we would be planning for an all-state meeting to consider our work, mainly our work plan for the future year. Given the circumstances, is there any interest in doing anything like that this year?
I'm not seeing much.
It might not exist. Doesn't that wait?
3.6 is the Annual Financial Management Questionnaire, which is on page 12. Do you want to introduce this?
Yes, I will. This started around 2012, 2013 from the State Auditor's Agency. And that every year, the government, schools had to join, I think municipalities this, but I know that schools had to join some other government, at least, for the State Auditor's to go through or check this. That's reviewed by our external auditor and affirms that the way Laurie fills us out every year as to what we do and how we best practices in our financial management. We have to present it to boards every year, and the chair signs off that we presented it to you for any questions. I'll tell you, as in other years, you asked me what's changed, I'll just go right to the answer, which is nothing has changed from the previous years, you've seen this. Laurie and her financial team get high marks on the system.
Right. Similar questions to what the auditor would be asking?
Right, and it's just ones that check out, it's a self-assessment that we do, and then they just check it.
Just one question, how, how deep is the bench in Laurie's shop?
I mean, it could be, so we are finishing a, we had a consultant come in that the executive committee approved for looking at our personnel structure in Central Office of Finances for Financial and Human Resources. And we're short the staff we should have for the size, for the number of organizations and size of money that flows through us.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll just acknowledge that we reviewed it. All right, thank you. So 3.7 is Board Observation Opportunities. This is the time of year where there's a lot to observe.
Yeah, I'll send these out to the board members as well, just so that you have a copy. But just as a quick note, on May 9th through the 11th, we actually have the All-State Music Festival here at the school. That's not just our students, but it is certainly a showcase of talent from Vermont. I highly encourage it, my own child participated in it her three years that she was here. So I attended, I think it's a great event, May 9th through the 11th. There's a lot of things on the calendar, from jazz band to choral to orchestra, it's fantastic. We have, June 3rd is the High School Concert. June 7th is Dance 32 and the Spring Art Show on June 7th. Oh, I missed a May date, May 17th, we're gonna have a Cultural Diversity Day. I don't know, are you gonna speak to that a little bit in the student report? Okay, I'm not gonna sue you thunder. And then Mentor Night, I'm pretty sure is June 17th.
I see it on May 15th.
Mentor Night is May 15th?
Mentor Appreciation.
Ooh, I'm way off on that one. May, say it again.
15. We also have Decision Day coming up. But I saw it twice on the calendar, so I'm not sure which one is right. So I reached out to Lisa and we'll have that on whatever Stephen sends out to you. It's either the 24th or the 30th.
What is that exactly?
Oh, it's...
It's an assembly where all of the seniors get to announce what they're doing next year.
And you have to hit a gong.
You don't have to.
I was basically hit the gong.
But we usually have somebody from faculty say a few words about the decisions that they made, and then the kids tell us what they're doing next year. They get to celebrate.
Yeah. In my youth, the gong show was quite a different.
Shelby's amazing. I'm, I'm struggling not to make an age joke.
So we'll send out those things so that you, would you know where they are? The board is certainly invited to any of those events.
And there will be branching out and pilot presentations in the last few weeks of school as well.
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay, question? Thank you. So reports to the board, 4.1 is Central Vermont Career Center.
So I would, I would just offer that there's a meeting coming up, but they just had a planning meeting. It wasn't us, so they're, they had it...
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yes, that's why I don't know too much detail. You should not have been at that one. They are discussing the possibility of moving to a full-day program. And so that was a beginning of some of that discussion, but there'll be more talk at the Fig Board.
Which is happening Monday night, Monday afternoon at 4:30, I believe. So to make it clear, is there anything for me to do on, on Central Vermont early? No? Okay, I thought that was the answer.
Yep.
Okay. Own the policy.
Okay, good, how about students?
Um, so, on, on Monday, one of the seniors named Max Sabo did a climate change presentation. It's like this project he's working on through branching out, I think, all year, or semester, about climate change and the implications of it. So that was pretty widely attended and on that train of thought also.
Also on climate, today there was a climate rally, youth climate rally today at the State House. So it was a field trip, or you could go on your own too. And there was a decent number of U32 students that attended that.
And then also, as I'm sure all of you know, spring store, spring sports, excuse me, are well underway now that the fields are mostly dried out. Things are growing a little bit more than they were a while ago.
Last night at the school, there was a film presentation of Downstream, which is a film about the trauma and implications of children who have parents who are incarcerated.
And then also, a lot of testing is happening right now. This week, the tests are for, you should talk about it, I have no idea what it is.
The juniors on Monday and tomorrow for an hour and a half in the morning have to take a standardized science test.
The state science test.
State science test. I don't, yeah.
And then, yeah, next week, the AP tests begin for two weeks, so a lot of kids are gonna be sitting through those. And here, actually.
Do you want to say that one?
Oh, yeah. And then, I think it was, it was last week that I had with you two. Yeah, so last week, Neo was in Vermont, but I, so I went with Bill and Stephen about ways to increase student voice in our community, which is sort of a never-ending issue. But we came up with some potential ideas about sort of students feeling opinions and solutions to like policy proposals in our school. Like there are several things in the works right now that directly affect students. So the three of us talked about like how we can get their input in a structured and effective way because we don't really have a system in place right now that is serving that role.
Yeah, and then Stephen mentioned All-States, I'm not sure if you heard about that. And on May 17th, Ginger and I have been planning, or Ginger Knight and I have been planning Diversity Day, which is gonna be an all-day-ish event, surrounding cultural. So we wanted, our goal is to bring cultures to the school and education and awareness around cultures, especially ones that usually are misrepresented or we don't often hear a lot about. And so in the morning, we changed the schedule around. So there's gonna be a band in the morning where we have different people coming into workshops, and there're gonna be different movies playing and discussions going around. And then there's gonna be another band in the afternoon that will have the same sort of events. It'll be different activities, but the same kind of things. And then in the afternoon, or at night, from 5:30 to 7:30, we're gonna have food and music, I'm pretty sure, out, outside. It's gonna be for the entire community, not just the school and students.
What day was that?
May 17th. I'm sure if you guys wanted to come to the workshops and stuff in the morning during the day, that would be great too. 9:30 and 1:20, yes.
And that'll be in the email that you're sending out. Any questions?
Yeah, I just had one question on the, the movie about the incarcerated parents. Was that shown during the school day or was that after?
No, that was after school. It was available to anybody.
It was more of a community event.
Community event.
Just a school, yeah.
My mom wants, I've heard a lot about it.
Do you know if Max Sabo's presentation was recorded?
It was.
Yes.
By our students who are editing it together to, to do. And I think we sold this, I mean, Lucy sold it well, but we had two, he, he gave the presentation twice. The first presentation was to the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. The attendance was about half of the auditorium was about what we had. The second presentation was to 7th, 8th, and 9th grade, packed auditorium. And so, like, this is no small feat for a senior to stand up in front of almost every one of his peers and give a phenomenal presentation. I mean, it was great.
It's wonderful.
It was a teaching.
It was a teaching, it was wonderful. And faculty, you know, who are all, sometimes skeptical of what's gonna happen, right? Because you never know, walked out of there saying, wow, that was really, really well done. I mean, he just, he demonstrated everything that we ask of a kid, you know, when we want them to show that they know, you know, how to present information to others. And so he did a great job. Move forward.
I, I've got to also watch some kids, seventh graders, present their food truck project yesterday. So they had this project that they did and it was under the guise of being shark tanks. So two, they're, they basically all presented to their core, and then two of those presentations were moved forward. And a few faculty and myself got to be sharks, which was fun. It was fun to have the Leo's big dollars. And they presented, so the two groups of five students presented their food truck, and they, they talked about what they would serve, they had a menu, they had a budget, they had exactly how much money they would need from the sharks. And the amazing thing was we peppered them with questions. We had 10 minutes to question them, and there was no pause. We did not take it easy on them, and they were just thinking on their feet. And it was wonderful to see the thoughtful responses they had, and they, they were quick, and they brought in the economics terms that they'd been using. It was really awesome just to see that happening with seventh graders. And I know the night before, the eighth grade also from Portos had done a civil rights museum for their parents as an authentic audience. So it was a couple of other examples just this week, so.
And I would say the student learning outcome, that, that shark tank was, was the economics part of global citizenship.
Yes, we haven't hit that yet.
Yeah, we're getting better. Yeah. Economics is an area that we identified as not teaching a lot of as, as we started looking at our learning outcomes. Now we're getting it earlier, so.
Okay, why don't we move on to 4.3 Administration?
I have to talk to him now.
I think, I think you did most of your part. I don't know if Jody, you, you had about shark tank, anything else you wanna add? I, I, Lucy touched on it, I've had probably three or four student groups this year that have talked and you want to talk about policy issues and how they move those forward to the board. And that really spurred a piece, I've worked with Up For Learning in Vermont, previously when I was curriculum director, I've been with LBD and doing work with getting student voice. And I know Stephen's gonna be talking with her. They've, they've worked here within, with our GATS, with the GATS program we've had before. But I think it's really important to have student voice in on those, and I think we all agree on that. Tenor, I've always heard of this board. And so one of the things that I wanted to know and ask, and Lucy and Eric and Stephen were having this discussion is, you know, it's kind of random right now, and I don't know what the priorities are of the student body. And I think Lucy, you said something really nice, it was like, I don't know how many students would wanna get into that conversation. But I said, I'd like to make it available in a way we have that and talk about what are some of the pressing, pressing things for the students and, and try to, try to get that to the board.
We tried to like generate ideas about how that would happen because right now, we don't have like a group that's like solely focused on student voice. Like you'd think, oh, it might be student council, but they do more like community stuff, like community service events and stuff. So we talked about some sort of like committee that could be four, five peers, but then we ran into the issue of, okay, like everyone who is on that committee is gonna be like a super high-flying motivated student who might have a differing opinion and perspective from people not on it. So then we sort of explored options regarding that, and we talked about potentially having, like it sounds great for a teenager to have given a better name, but like a forum on like an issue where people could come and share what they thought about it because that is a way that like theoretically, the like minority or just less involved community can get hurt on issues.
Diversity and inclusion.
Yeah, so that's a big piece. I know I, you've seen in my reports, I include stuff in the transition.
Right. Is there, is there any update on borrowing?
Uh, we think we have a solution that we'll be talking about tomorrow night. We have a short-term solution, and then there'll be loss of revenue because of that. That's programmed in the budgets already, but we'll be able to solve it, that's the good news. And that's why, it's, Scott, you and Carl saw, I should send that, I should continue the practice from last week and send out that packet, everybody else will see it. So there was a memo in there showing you what the borrowing amount is, and I think there's a solution to that. a solution to the bank. Heard from their attorney.
Any other comments on transition? Turn the bolts here.
You don't have to.
Checking it off. Finance, there's a report on page 19, but I don't think it looks very different from the last one we've told you.
It hasn't because we're still, we're in the midst of shutting down the system right now, as we always do. I mean, we've, a lot of people, they need to say what they need for the rest of the year, not can't access money, but we need to get that so, and especially this year with this transition of making sure that we have an accurate accounting at the end of this year. I hope, I hope I'm trying to maybe stay up to the...
Any questions about the financial report? Executive Committee. Our only focus has been the search process for interim superintendent and we will need tomorrow to hear a report on what our searches yielded so far. We did hire a consultant in marketing. A couple of good choices and hopefully they'll get some good news from. Anything else?
Time in that meeting and where? Four o'clock?
Four, four to 5:30.
Four. And we're rolling into transition, we're still... Just making sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I see you in June?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, before I forget, I know that there's a whole lot of things that we have to do as a board, but one of the things that I would love for this board to do as a final act is to recommend to the new board that we have student participation. Because the new board isn't necessarily geared towards that thought, because there's a thousand other things that they're, they're gonna be thinking of, but this is the only board that truly has student representation on it. And if you guys could recommend it to the...
And we actually talked to Lucy about that. I totally forgot about that. We talked to Lucy about that and she said, is there a way to get representation of a student from every one of the five towns? And so, and it's a lot, I mean, as we all know, there's a lot of board that has student reps on boards, so.
I mean, you guys know the value, but people who've served on the elementary boards, it just may not be in their consciousness to, to think about.
Could I suggest that one of us draft a recommendation and bring to the next meeting if you agree?
Good.
One of us just recommend it?
Sure. Once we get there, I mean.
Yeah, we could do that once, you know, once we get there.
I'll, I'll take care of getting them. You just...
But, but, yeah. I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea. I don't anticipate it.
I don't think there'll be any problem in thinking about who's...
Okay. I just don't want us to forget.
No.
You know, like it's one of those.
You won't let us.
Thank you for writing a report. Much appreciated.
Tell me if you have that.
Policy Committee.
No. Sorry.
It's okay. And we'll move into the action agenda item. Approve the ESP contract for academic year 2019, 2020 as negotiated by the negotiations committee.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I was writing, I was making a note about student representation still.
We're, we're being asked to approve the ESP contract.
Ah, yes. We like it. Was that? Sure.
So the negotiation committee worked with the ESP associations and settled at a 3.5% increase for, for a one-year contract, the same health changes as the teachers did, which changed it from 8218 to 820. But also, there wasn't any money change for the employee or the employer because we increased the amount of healthcare reimbursement account to 100% coverage so that it would be easier on the paperwork for taking care of all the different questions. And there were, there were some changes in recognizing how the job position is behavior interventionist and personal care attendance, which we didn't have before.
3.5%?
3.5%.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moving to approve.
A second.
Questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That passes. Then approve the non-bargaining contracts.
So I would recommend to the board that this is for folks that are administrators and then we have some admin assistants because of the information they have, they are not in the bargaining unit. And so it's folks that supervise or that, or admin assistants. For your administrators that are your assistant principals, principal, uh...
Associate.
Associate principal, I'm seeing Amy's position in my head.
Director.
Director, yeah, directors, that they receive 3.1% because they would be comparable to what the teachers' increase was. That our other directors for buildings and grounds, food service, for those two, because they supervise folks that are ESP, they get the same increase as their ESP, the folks that supervise them, which is 3.5. And that's, that, you've heard that other years from me.
Is that clear? Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll move that. A second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? If that passes.
Thank you.
5.3, approve hires, new hires. So on page 24 is a combination for Brennan Lynch.
Brennan Lynch was a one-year faculty in the math department this year, filling in for Kate McCann, who has been on leave. Kate is returning at the same time. You approved Kendra Christiana's resignation because she's moving. Last meeting and so we're just moving that you bring Brennan full-time. This is, this should be an easy one for us. Like she's been with us for a year, she's very good. She, and we wanna make her full-time. And then there's a second one from Mark Brown, from Mark Brown, who's been a one, was a one-year while Alden was out on his parole fellowship, but you will see him in a minute for accepting...
David Davis.
Resignation, David Davis is moving on to another career opportunity.
Essentially, we're asking you to make our two one-year appointments, permanent appointments for next year to fill in for two people who are leaving.
Agreed.
And it works out beautifully. For them and for us.
So is there a motion to accept those two appointments?
Yeah, we're not, how many, how many says? We're not actually approving it, we're just sort of...
You have to approve it because they are licensed positions the board has to...
He recommends.
I have to recommend. For non-licenced here, I can go to hire.
Uh-huh, thank you. I'll move it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That passes. And on page 25, we have the bids for the kitchen devoted. An understanding is that we need a new hood or we can't have a food service operation next year.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Unless you alter and we'll shut down the kitchen.
Looks like we received two bids and one of them is quite a bit lower than the other.
Yes. You can imagine which one we want to award to? Would be the Alliance Mechanical bid for $93,982.
We've done business with Alliance?
Yes. We use them quite regularly. We use both of those, Thomas and Alliance.
And that includes the whole system, the ancil system and all the...
Get it ready. Get it, get it out.
Not an inexpensive...
I can manage a kitchen, yeah. Not only expensive, but it seems like there's a huge delta between the two.
Yeah, sure is. It's almost like the other company didn't want the job.
Sometimes they take a chance that they're the only bidder.
There's also, we're at the time of year where you get big fluctuations. Almost everyone's booked from now until the end of this calendar year. If you really, I mean, some of the other schools have talked about doing some things with their capital fund, they're like, guys, we can't, can't get somebody right now. They're booked. So we were on the edge of this one, going out.
So there's a recommendation to approve the Alliance bid. Is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
Some.
Second.
Should I put a dollar amount in that or no?
That would be fine.
900 what?
$93,982.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? That passes. And then on page 26, we have a resignation for David Davis.
That's correct. He's been with us for one year. He moved here because his wife got a position in, in Vermont from, they moved from Colorado. They'll now be moving to New York City with that, with her job change now. And so he's regretfully resigning, but it was, it, trailing spouse.
Is there a motion to accept this resignation?
Tell me.
Carl? Any discussion?
It doesn't ever work.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? That passes and there's no retirements.
There's no retirements.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the board orders?
I have one question.
Okay, can you just say? For $49,152.98.
You might need to signature two hundred...
And a second for $150,725.
We're gonna answer the same thing.
And 40 cents. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I move it.
Scott? And a second?
Sure. I do want to ask a question.
So, yeah, questions?
I need to see them to remind myself what I was asking about.
Can I ask Mike a question?
Sure, you ask.
So there was a line item on there for Golden Corral.
Yes.
For like a grand or something like that.
Eight grand trip to Washington DC.
Okay.
Worst meal you'll ever have. Toronto. It's one of the kids' favorite.
Is it, is it New Jersey to the pipe?
No. It's coming out of DC. The kids love it. Oh, yeah. Ice cream. It is so rough.
And then you get all the Boston, you let that sit there for days.
The kids love it, so that's the eight grand trip.
My question was $11,292.5 to American Airlines.
That would be the Peru trip.
Peru trip. And then the Community Bank line below it, the amount is off by 70 cents. It's, it's $11,292.5 to American Airlines, it's $11,299.5 from Community Bank.
I can't help you on that.
It's just, somebody got a ball.
Because it was a, because it was a wire.
It's typo or there was a little charge of 70 cents or something.
Good.
For a wire transfer, but I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask.
I'm not, I'm not that worried about the second thing, I just thought I was curious.
Any other discussion about the board orders? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Is everybody signed it?
If they're all signed, that works to me.
Future agenda items, we have a meeting in June.
June 5th. June, I believe is the first Wednesday, which is gonna be a carousel meeting.
Okay.
Of the SU and all the boards.
Okay.
We have done this past three or four years. It's June 5th. Let me get the exact date by looking at it. It's the first Wednesday, which is June 5th.
So theory is a shorter, shorter meeting. We have one agenda item already.
I'll, I'll bring some information about the materials that we're using to help kids get into college under the proficiency system.
Thank you.
Because we actually have some work on that.
That's great.
May I also remind the board, June 14th graduation, we always ask that you hold time before the graduation for the potential for an emergency meeting because we, we have had, we haven't had my time here, so I would...
We have had.
But there has been a need for an appeal by family if their child is not able to graduate. Like I said, it hasn't happened while I've been here, so hopefully we're not gonna have it this time either.
Sometimes something happens on the senior trip.
There's always that. Yeah. So, so if it can, it could be a disciplinary issue, it could be an academic issue. We'll try to make, make sure that neither one of those happens and if you guys don't have to come. But just remember that we hold that time before graduation at 5:00.
Yeah, yes, that's, I would say 4:30.
4:30.
But I would make sure, Chris, that you get an appointment sent to you with that time as soon as you know.
And we usually have people come to the senior awards.
Yes.
Somebody will give Lucy her...
It's usually the chair does that.
Oh.
We'll send that out.
I'll be there if that's right.
Not your mic, not your mic.
No, that's true.